Everybody. Good evening. It is Thursday, February 4th. And this is our new, our new date and new day to have a meeting. So we're still getting used to that. Thank you for all being here. I'll start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by W A C A Cable TV. And our order of business this evening includes our opening procedures, our call to order, agenda review and adoption, recognitions and student presentations. Student Advisory Council, do we have the student advisory? Kids here? Or will they be here? Maybe.
Kelly.
Um, I only see Rahim and one other student said she was going to be here. Three are playing in a basketball game tonight.
They got adjusted because of the weather. Yeah.
I mean, we can move it further down on the agenda to see if anybody does show up after their game, or we can do whatever you want, Kelly. Just let me know when that, when the time comes. So we've got that. We've got our items of interest to the public include administrative items, including the superintendent's update COVID-19. S E L with Ms. Cutler, athletic discussion and votes, Mr. Marks, the winter athletic fee adjustment. Allowing fans senior night games versus T V L schools not in pod. Approval of M O A with Ashland Educators Association. Approval of proposal for district communication review. Assistant Superintendent update warrant approvals. Consent actions include the approval of the amendments from December 28, 2020 and January 8, 2021. Acceptance of gifts if there are any committee reports of activities, member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn. So I will take the roll call and ask if everybody is okay with this order business this evening, starting with you, Kathy Bates.
Here and yes.
Mark Terry.
Here and yes.
Paul Kendall.
Here and yes.
Aaron Williams.
Here and yes.
Excellent. Thank you. And then I will ask if there. The student presentations is on the agenda first, Kelly, before public comment, but I'll propose if it's okay with everybody that we move to public comment. And we'll see if there are anybody that shows up that wants to report from the student group. So if you are here from the public and you'd like to share something with us, now is the time. I ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes. And we will. Listen to what you have to say. Please feel free to just let me know if you want to speak by raising your hand or unmuting yourself. Okay, Ryan, I see you. And so you can be first. I don't see any others right now. So why don't we start with you, Ryan? And if there's anybody else who doesn't want to say anything, you can go after Ryan.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Ryan Turncliff, 21 Rossi Lane. I don't know if that's formal procedure at school committee or not. Thanks for the opportunity to chat tonight. Jim, you need a, you need a shirt that says superintendent. I think you left that role a little while ago. So just. I submitted a note to the school committee for consideration to the modifications to the travel policy. I just wanted to advocate for consideration to those changes. I know the travel policy was put in with, with the best of intentions. I think our family has experienced. Some challenges with the travel policy, not in following it, but in watching what's evolved, how it's being followed or handled. And, you know, recognizing where we are with, with the pandemic, when that travel policy was put in place. There were perhaps more liberties allowed to given the rates of COVID in, in Massachusetts and in neighboring states. Everything's changed since that child policy was put in place. Our family has struggled. We've certainly follow it. Our kids are being forced to make really hard decisions about whether to leave the state because it means they can't go to school. That week and they have friends that, that are either following or not following the policy, which is made for some really challenging conversations. So. Part of what I wanted to share is, is that perspective. Maybe you've heard it already. Maybe you're aware of it, maybe you're not. I don't think we are wanting to foster an environment where we report on each other because that's, that's not the right thing to do either. Another challenge that, that we face is that our educators aren't being held to that same travel policy. Now there are probably good reasons for that, and I recognize those as well. But it doesn't make it any easier for us to, to know that the same policy isn't applied to everyone in town. And there's sports going on. There's sports that are happening in town, out of town. People are traveling within the state and out of state. Frankly, I think it's riskier to do some things in Massachusetts than it is to do some of those same things outdoors. So. Anyway, just, uh, just a moment to consider that what I proposed, rather than just to complain is to suggest a revision. To be considered for March 1st, which would be after the February break. Allowing for that travel policy to stay in place. I would ask, though I didn't write this, that maybe the policy consider. Modes of public transportation that it, that it applies to. Where, you know, you're trying to avoid people gathering or being around a wider audience. So. As you're considering things like having attendance at sporting events, it asks just for an all encompassing consideration that includes the travel policy as well. Hopefully that was under three minutes.
It's perfect, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Lauren, I know we don't typically engage, but I just wanted to. I appreciate what, what Ryan's offered in terms of comments and observations, but I guess just Ryan, if you wouldn't mind, could you speak to sort of what? Is what you're, you're proposing is the line in light of sort of what the state, the state guidelines are about travel restrictions. Sort of what, what you see is the part of our policy, maybe it's a better way, but what parts of our policy do you see that are not aligned that you'd like to get closer look at?
Specifically the five day rule for testing after travel.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. And I guess any further questions about that, any change in policy, Ryan, typically our process. And again, we don't, we don't usually engage with public comment, but. If this might be something that everybody else is interested in too, and this is just a process response. But it's the policy, we have a policy subcommittee and they bring policies to us. So, you know, if, if anybody takes another look at, at the actual policy, it would be the subcommittee first. And if they were going to bring any changes. So I'll just put that out there in case anybody from the policy subcommittee wants to offline, get more information from you. You guys can start there.
I know how to, I know how to contact Ryan.
You know where to find.
You all, you all know where to find me.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Adams, we're going to go right to you, or is there any student here yet that wants to give us? A report? Not yet.
I could do it. You want to? Yeah. The whole report for everyone?
You want to give us a report or did you want to wait for any of your team?
I mean, there's not much. I could just, just go over it.
That was great.
Prepared a couple of points. So. As you know, the basketball season started and a bunch of like other winter sports did too. So the trials went well. I know the season's going on. I think they're playing Norwood today. So that's pretty exciting. Today was actually the first day in turn three, four cohort B, like being like in person. So I was obviously there and it was like really nice. See teachers again. Past week, there was voting at the high school for the new public safety building and the construction of the, I think it was the Mendez. So that went really well. I was actually volunteering. On Saturday and Wednesday, and it really did go well. We were like all socially distanced and sanitizing. So yeah, it was really safe and it was just nice to like see people doing something like regular, like voting. Clubs and after schools activities can now meet with like regulations and like, and like smaller numbers as I was told recently. So I have like a class officer meeting. On Monday, I think. So that's pretty nice. And now all classes are live streamed. So students are like tuning in for like all their classes. And yeah, that's all I've got.
Excellent. A lot going on. And thank you for your volunteering with the voting. Anybody who voted or who was there in any capacity knows how, how smoothly those days went and the volunteer, especially the student volunteers were a huge part of that. So thank you very much for that.
My pleasure.
All right. Any other public comment before then I go to Jim? Okay. So Jim, we'll start with you.
So Mrs. Tusk, if you don't mind, I would actually like Stephen Marks to jump ahead of me. He's got a game tonight, which again, it had to be rescheduled. And he's got, he's got a couple of items on here and so he can get back in and supervise the gym. If you don't, if everyone's okay with that, I should have mentioned it when you did the, the consent of the agenda.
Do we have a consensus from the committee to move Mr. Marks up on the agenda?
Yes.
Lean over backwards for sports. What's going on?
I will say this before he begins. I, I went to the basketball game on Sunday and. To see the work they've done in terms of, of physically distancing the chairs and how they run the basketball games. And it was, it was excellent. And. You know, I applaud Amy and Stephen for the work they've done inside that gymnasium. And I mean, if you felt like you're just like Tommy, like this big open space. You know, I still can't get my head wrapped around some of the, the rules, but hey, but it was, it was pretty good. They just played. You know, run and shoot everything. There's no defense, believe me. There's no close contact. Stephen, sorry, go ahead.
You're up, Stephen.
All right. Thank you. So, um, the, the first thing I want to talk about is the, the winner user fee. So. You know, the reality of the situation is we did not have a full winter season. We're not having one by M I A standards or the T V L standard. So. We have yet to collect user fees from anybody for the winner. And we took a look at the numbers in terms of the budget and what our potential revenue is and our expenses. And. We actually ran the numbers at four different points. We ran them. If we had a full user fee, if we had a 70% user fee, because by days, we're technically participating in 70% of the available days to us. We looked at a 50% user fee just to cut it in half. And then we looked at it as a percentage of the amount of games. That teams are playing versus what a typical season would be. I was able to sit down with, with Chris Matthew, and I want to thank him a lot for helping me run these numbers. And ultimately we came to the conclusion that we're comfortable and able to support a 50% user fee. So I'm asking, you know, my recommendation to, to the committee would be that we charge a half user fee for this winter season.
So Stephen, just if I read the backup right. If it hadn't been COVID and we went through, we had budgeted just over 102,000 and would have had a full fee. Of 31, over 31,000. So roughly. The general fund would be covering roughly 70,000 of that. And. We're now talking about, you know. Covering roughly. 62,000. About right.
Yes. Yep.
Given how does this compare to what we did, folks participated in the fall sports for season?
We, we didn't throw rate anything for the fall because we were able to start on time from what our, our season was in the Tri Valley League. We were able to, to start at the beginning. So.
But it was a shorter season, wasn't it?
What, what do you mean it was a shorter?
Oh, weren't there fewer games?
Yes, there's fewer games regardless. Yeah, no matter what, but we missed three weeks of, of this season. So.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
That's what I'm saying. I'm supportive of the reduction. I think it's fair and appropriate under the circumstances. You could. Argue about a number, but you know, cutting it in half. Interesting that, that it works out from a budget perspective. You know, if it's got Stephen and Chris and Jim's blessing for it, I'm in favor.
And Chris and Jim? Yep. Thumbs up. Thumbs up. Any other concerns, questions before I ask for a motion?
I think Mark covered. The only other thing I was going to ask is equity for the different seasons, knowing that they were, they were shorter for the. As it relates to the number of contests, but we're reducing this because it was actually, we missed the time and not necessarily just, just contests, right?
That's right.
I'm supportive of it as well. It sounds like you ran the different iterations of it and picked the one that is most fair, but also one that we can support with our budget. So. I'll take a motion unless anybody else has any questions or concerns about that.
I move to approve the winter athletic fee adjustment as proposed by Stephen Marks.
I'll second.
All in favor, Aaron? Hi, Kathy?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
And I for me as well. That passes. And then next up, Stephen, did you have?
Yeah, these, these two will be quick. So the next one is for senior night. So, you know, my proposal to you guys that was approved was to a no spectator policy right now. I, I'm asking. You know, the committee to consider allowing us to have senior night celebrations. There are very few seniors. We have four for ice hockey. Seven for boys' basketball and six for girls' basketball. I would ask that each player be allowed to have two adult spectators come to celebrate senior night, take pictures and stay. Watch the games. I can easily notice them, whether it's at hockey or basketball, very far apart from each other. And they would do that as soon as next week if approved. So.
Any questions or concerns about that?
Do we have to limit to adults or like if there was like, say a single mom and an older sibling? Like, is that okay too? Or you just saying?
To keep it consistent, we, we've done just adult spectators for the entire year across the T V L. So it doesn't need to be mom and dad, just two, two adults is what I'm proposing.
And Steve, when you, when you said as early as next week, you're talking about singular nights for each, each sport, right?
Yes. Yep.
I, I guess I'd be fine with as long as, you know, COVID cop signs off on whatever you're doing. So.
Where's COVID cop? Have a thumbs up from COVID cop?
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. It's, it seems like it would be safe, especially Jim, after you just said that it's all spaced out too. So I feel comfortable with it.
Yeah, same. Under those circumstances, you know, we, we're finding ways to, to vote and to do other things. And this is important as well. So. Makes sense to me. And I will take a motion unless anybody else has a question or concern about that. Do we need to move for that, Mark?
I think. Think, you know, one of the things that kind of came to mind last week is our, where we approved our motion to go forward with. The, with the fall, whatever season we're involved in, right? Winter, excuse me, winter. Yeah, we kind of, we just approved Stephen's proposal and that included in it this. So I think just, you can either take a view. It's like to me, I'm sort of fine with it. It's either modification to that or not, but I think because we had a vote that kind of included this as a part of it, we ought to take a motion to. Allow for basically an exception to the no, no. No fans rule.
That makes sense.
That was at the motion.
So. Somebody make it first. I move to approve an exception to the no fans rule to allow for senior night on the terms presented by the athletic director.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And all in favor, Kathy?
I.
Mark?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
Paul? And I for me as well. That passes. And then the next one, games versus T V L schools not in the pod.
Yeah, thank you. This one.
Is that about?
So basically what's happening, it, it didn't happen at all in the fall, but in the winter, we had a number of teams, other schools, opponents that ended up getting quarantined. For instance, last week we played Holliston. And two of their teams, their freshman basketball and J V girls' basketball teams were quarantined. And again, because the presentation was that we were only going to play against. One town per week. You know, I was able to, or I could have scheduled games potentially against another town in the T V L, whether it was someone from the T V L small. Or another team in the T V L large, but I wanted to, to ask the committee to consider if we do get into an incident like, or instance like that. And there's another team that has been deemed safe and their numbers look okay from our weekly meeting, you know? Can I schedule another team in there so the kids can still play that week?
So one question on that, Stephen, is. So we're talking only about T V L and everyone, now when we've talked about the agreements. That the other athletic directors and other schools have done, it's been across the whole T V L or just our pod that's agreed to the different things we've talked about?
The entire T V L.
Okay. And then just. When you do that, I'm assuming all the same oversight will occur. So even though this isn't a scheduled thing that their athletic director is going to be present or you'll be present. And ensure that all the, all the normal and agreed upon protocols are being followed, right?
Of course. Yep.
And my, my view is that, you know, it's sort of similar to my prior comment. I think, you know, by the way, we sort of handled the approval. We, in some ways restricted Stephen's ability to deal with the kind of scenario he's got now. Now, I personally, as long as in line with the, the general safety requirements that the committee is supported. I certainly don't want to be in a position of interfering with things as mundane as like the scheduling of, of a game. You know, Stephen has an ability to fill in, fill in a blank in a schedule in a way that's consistent with our safety expectations. I don't, I think you ought to be able to do that. You know, and so I'm sure this vote, I don't even know if we need, need a vote for it, but I appreciate bringing it back just because of the. Breath of the, of the way we approach the entire move.
Other questions or comments?
We would limit it to T V L, right? We wouldn't.
Yeah.
Yeah. And to Mark's point, I think we, we need to vote it because all of our protocols said how things were going to run only at the same school. Week and stuff like that. It's a, it's a deviation from there. So.
Stephen, are there other T V L schools that are looking to do this as well, where there may be crossing pods when they have a cancellation?
Yeah. I mean, we're getting asked every day, who wants to play this sport at this time?
Everybody's. So we're not going to like ascend anybody that we're like kind of bursting our pod.
Absolutely not. No.
Good question though.
Well, right. If it was going to interfere with other people then wanting to play us or having the ability to play us. But I mean, I guess my question might be more for Audrey and COVID cop over there. But. You know, as I'm understanding some of the reasons why, you know, we're having success for, for. Lack of transmission in school, you know, one thing that comes up is the fact that we're doing things in cohorts. And I think that was also part of what was behind limiting these little groups in the competitions. And I'm not sure if the same principle applies, but obviously there's a reason why we tried to limit the people that we were. We were, and this is more of a question. It's not, I, I don't know if I have a concern about it yet, but. You know, is that same concept, you know, apply over there? The fewer teams that we're engaging with, the less risk we have. And are we? Taking on additional risk by opening it up a little bit?
You going Audrey or?
I am.
So. I mean, are we, anything we open up, we're going to obviously increase a little bit of risk, obviously, right? I mean, that's going to happen regardless, no matter what, what the scenario is. Um, you know. I mean, if people are really careful, I mean, I think we could try it. You know, like we just, we just had, we just, I'm just telling you about something that just happened. We just had a. You know, in the, the younger kids, you know, we had some kids in a soccer group that are now all quarantined, but. And that funneled over a little bit to basketball because they were on both teams. So, you know. But we caught it quick. I mean. That's the scenario.
So I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is, do you guys have any concerns about opening up the pod a little bit or moving outside of the pod?
Can I, can I add one thing to that?
Yeah.
So, so the way that it's working in the winter are, so each team is practicing on their own. So like a pod of, you know, whether it's Holliston's J V girls' team or Westwood's J V's girls' team. They're practicing in their pod. So whoever we would potentially play, it's that pod and our girls' J V pod, you know, competing against each other. So yes, there's, you know, it's different communities, but it. There's not as much, you see what I'm saying? So it's just those two pods. So we're just replacing one pod for the other, not the entire.
And it's, it also sounds like the same conversations and analytics are done with that pod as we're doing with the ones that we normally, right? So. Jim's still having conversations with their superintendent. You're having conversations with the A D and we're looking at incident rates and, you know, and doing, taking the same precautions. So essentially. It should be similar risk, right? I would imagine.
The way, the way I think about it, just sort of logically is if, if there's just, one of the benefits of keeping all our teams. Playing against the same other school district for a given week is if there's contamination in Ashland and. And it, it spreads to Austin or the other way around. At least it's only those two town, two towns. But if. You have. Team going to Hollis and one team going to Hollis, not to Hockington, it could foster, but to me, it just feels like such a, a random and remote thing. Suggest that that's going to instigate a widespread outbreak in a given town. I, I'm comfortable that there's a little bit of risk. It's really unidentifiable. Under these circumstances and if we can get our kids, you know, another opportunity to play because, you know, they're, they only have a couple of games as it is. I certainly support it.
Yeah. And I think, Mark, it, we're still doing essentially the same thing. Instead of just being at a district level, it's at a team level, right? So. That team is still only playing one other and they're not co-mingling internally with our athletics. They certainly come back into their schools, but.
Yeah. And that's right, Paul. It's the, the, the fact that the teams co-intermingle with other kids and other teams. But, you know, it's, it's one of those things like, we might as well just all lock ourselves in our houses and, and not leave it all because it just gets to be too attenuated to figure out. So that's why I say, I think there's probably, you know, some increased risk, but it's probably like half a percent. And I'm comfortable with what Stephen's proposing personally.
Any other questions? Risk, but. I think that there's probably increased risk, but I think I would go ahead with, with Stephen's proposing.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody ready to make motion?
Mark, your honor. I'll try to figure out this one. So I guess I'll, I'll move to amend our prior approval to allow the athletic director to schedule. Interpod games within the T V L as necessary.
Second.
All in favor, Aaron?
I.
Mark?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I for me as well. That passes. Okay.
And the last thing is, is, was just an FYI. Stephen has to bring forth the fall two sports modifications, et cetera. And that's going to be scheduled for next Friday morning. At our COVID meeting as the initial presentation. Typically we've done it over two meetings. So we have another school committee meeting the following Thursday. Which is actually vacation week, but we'll be able to finalize any conversation then, if that's okay with the committee.
Sure.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay, Jim, approval of M O A?
No, let's go back up to COVID-19.
Back up to COVID-19.
So I'll just share the screen with you here. Our numbers for the week. So I'll just share the screen with you here, um, our numbers for the week. Again, uh, what you will see is we're again uh trending down uh as the rest of Massachusetts is as well. Uh, our, our cases are going down, our positivity rate is going down. Let me make this a little bit bigger, I'm sure it's too small. Is that okay? Uh, and uh, our, our total quarantining of, of faculty, staff as well as students, we went from ninety-one down to sixty-three this week. Uh, Ed mentioned um, you know, an incident at the real younger grades where we've had to quarantine. Uh, I think it was maybe nine kids, Audrey or Ed um, at the Warren School, uh, but as being close contacts of, of someone within. A, you know, outside um, club soccer group and basketball, so nothing that we're in control of. So again, uh, positive trending and we're certainly uh in, we're in the yellow from the state as well as our own adjusted. Um, and so I suggest we just maintain our hybrid model for next week going into vacation week. The weekend.
No need for a meeting in the morning.
And no need for a meeting in the morning, and I'll send an email out to remind folks that, that there'll be no meeting.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions or comments about the chart?
I assume things move in the right direction.
Sure thing.
Yeah, it's positive for sure. Um, you know, if you, even if you're looking at the athletics, right? And you're looking at the, the overall uh per one hundred thousand, all the schools are going down, all the other districts as well, so.
We haven't been in the bottom of the TVL like that.
It's the first time since the beginning. No, you're right, Aaron, it's the first, it's really the first time um, since the start, right? We've always been at least ahead of somebody, so.
You know, if nothing else, it certainly shows, you know, high correlation between social activity likely was going on around the holidays and. Um, and what happens with the spread, you know?
Well, to that. To that point, Mark, and sort of bringing up what Ryan, there's a few of Ryan's points from earlier. Okay, now we're, we're staring down a Super Bowl Sunday and February vacation. And are we, as far as compliance with the travel policy, it's sad to hear. Though I'm not incredibly surprised that there is some non-compliance, how are we sort of like thinking about? E- especially for Jim, you, Audrey and Ed of the February break being any more similar? Or less severe than Christmas or Thanksgiving was?
Uh, to be honest, we haven't really sat down and had that conversation. I, I think we're, all three of us are concerned a little bit. Um, but the difference between Thanksgiving and that December break was they were right back to back, right? There was no um, opportunity to breathe in between uh, you know, Thanksgiving, uh, the December break and New Year's. And um, you know, the travel policy, we had hundreds quarantined because of the travel policy during that time period. I think it, it really worked well um, during the December, uh, January timeframe. Audrey, do you agree? I mean, we, we thought it worked better then than it did in November.
Yes, but we did have um, four, four or five positives come out of it.
Right, so. So to Ryan's point too, uh, certainly we'll bring it back up within the subcommittee, uh, and I'm glad he said not until after the February break. Um, I think he recognizes as well that, that travel policy during the break is, is, is important, so. Um, so yeah, so that's, that's really the report, things are going in a positive direction. And I have nothing to report on testing. The governor again today in his press conference, um, has. Is steadfast in his um, belief that schools should be open uh without uh vaccinations for teachers. So, um, and that was sort of a comment that the CDC made as well uh today, or actually the last couple of days. And um, you know, that's a uh interesting take, so.
Interesting question that Jim has said, when they say open, do they mean like all students should be in the building or they mean hybrid like?
So that's, it's a great question and he's never fully come out, Mark, and, and he just says in person. He has not been explicit in what in-person means, uh, whether it's uh the hybrid model, cause our kids are in person. And there are still many districts that are just completely one hundred percent remote. I think he's looking at. He hasn't ever come out and said, everyone should be back in the buildings full-time. He just says, everyone, every district should be in person. So I haven't seen any um, any concrete statement on his part. Uh, and again, he also has to recognize the fact that CDC, uh, DPH, transportation, they haven't changed their tune on, on. The physical distancing between kids, teachers, on buses, et cetera, yet, so.
That's what I was gonna say, I've been watching the uh, the head of the CDC, you know, give the uh, press conferences lately and. Um, you know, while they are most recently saying that uh, teachers can go back without being vaccinated. And, and it can be considered safe, um, nobody is walking back any of the social distancing guidelines.
Right.
Um, as of yet, so, so we're still working within that framework. Which doesn't really, I don't think, change much for us.
Right, so that's to, to mark to your question, I think that's where the governor um, has, has walked that, that very thin line, right? Of saying in-person versus full in-person.
Yeah, I, I mean, I always, I always take those statements as not targeted towards districts like ours, but.
Correct.
The ones that need to make a better effort to get the kids in school.
Yeah, I. Yeah, Paul, I think it's just um, I think we've all been frustrated by um, lack of leadership at the state level and. You know, my feeling is it's one of those things that, you know, they're very generic because everybody can hear it the way they want to hear it. And you know, I think unfortunately that makes it very difficult for local school districts because some members of our community are going to say. Governor's telling you get back and get everybody back into school, right? Not really saying that, he's also not, not seeing that.
Right.
You know, it just um.
Yeah, he, he's unfortunate. The fingers at everybody, so.
He's a good politician.
In essence, nothing's changed.
Right. Um, so I've invited um, Jen Cutler tonight uh to just, you know, speak, you know, briefly to, to SEL. And what's happening within the district in terms of, um, I'd had a couple of members of the, of the committee ask me a little bit about how our kids were doing. Uh, thinking about the social emotional uh component of, of, you know, you know, the pandemic and how it's impacting. I, I think even staff, so I, I don't wanna uh just limit this to a conversation with regard to our students. Uh, it's certainly impacting our adults as well. Um, and uh, so Jen, I'll turn it over to you if you want to just take over.
Sure, uh, thank you, and I, I want to say that this is a perfect week for me to present at school committee because um, it happens to be National School Counseling Week. Um, so I've been trying to celebrate our, our counselors all week, um, and I just, I want to just say a public thank you. Um, to all of our mental health professionals in the district, our school counselors, our adjustment counselors and our school psychologists. Because it has just been really amazing um, seeing um, how creative they have been in, in providing services this year. And really helping our families um, and our students and our staff. Um, and uh, you know, I always like to, to remind our, our counseling staff that they also need to take care of themselves. Um, because they've been really trying to take care of, of everyone else, so um, just kind of wanted to give that a little shout out at the beginning of the meeting tonight. Um, so um, I'm happy to, to highlight what our counseling department has been doing. Um, uh, our students have been receiving more tier one, which is universal, that means everyone receives it. Um, social emotional support um, than they ever have on a consistent basis from our counseling staff district-wide. Um, really in response to the pandemic and the fact that we are trying to service our hybrid and remote models of learning this year. Um, so I kind of, I'm just gonna quickly go through each building um, and talk about basically how they're, what they're, what they've added in this year. To really meet this um, social emotional need that we're seeing. So at Warren, um, in addition to the monthly in-person SEL lessons that every class receives. Already, um, they've added in what they've called clock or connection meetings, um, which are run by our school counselors. Um, students receive them on their remote days, um, so that they're connecting with each other and with trusted adults in the building. And then this way, our counselors can really um, you know, look and see which, which kids are showing up. Um, try to identify, you know, on those days when they're not there, um, you know, what's going on? Do they need extra um, emotional support or other supports? Um, and so uh, our, um, our counselors at Warren have, were, were a little nervous initially. Um, in doing these remote lessons and have loved doing them. And they have said like, wow, it's amazing to them how many kids are showing up and really want to do, want to connect and, and have these check-ins. Um, and so I'm, I'm really happy to hear that, and I think it's been a really nice addition um, to what we've offered um, this year. At Mendez, um, uh, each classroom receives a live SEL lesson from their counselor one week. And then we post um, a lesson and assignment the following week in their Google classroom. Um, and I will say, because I have been doing these as well and they're the highlight of my day, um, the uh, kids have been so involved. And um, uh, they have been uh, you know, completing our posted lessons. And you know, we have like checkout forms on Google where they have to write what they learned and um, it's really amazing to see. Um, the, the response and uh, over the next two weeks, um, Claudia and I had been talking about. Uh, Claudia was really like, I want to get a gauge on what the social emotional state of our kids are, so we can start preparing and provide them what they need. Um, so we're gonna do um, at the beginning of our live lessons for the next two weeks, we're gonna have students fill out a survey on Google forms. So we can get a better understanding of how they're doing, so we're gonna look at, um, have them rate their, their friendships right now. Um, have them rate how they're feeling about school, um. Sorry, let me look at my, forgot the other, oh, have them rate their overall mood, how they've been feeling on most days. Um, and then a trusted, do they have a trusted adult um, at school uh, that they um, can talk to if they have a problem? Um, so I think we're all really excited to see what that um, data is gonna look like. So we can really provide, we can find students who maybe aren't already on our radar, aren't receiving small, you know, or small lunch groups or other supports. Um, so we can make sure that we're addressing that. Um, I have to say that today I was doing a lesson uh, with a fourth grade remote class. And from the RLA and um, we were talking about courage, cause that's our theme of the month. And they um, uh, just organically started talking about how, you know, they were feeling really lonely. And so we went on a whole discussion about that, so I really think that this um, speaks a lot to the um, the mental health um, of our kids. And I think that the survey is really gonna give us a lot of information to take action on, so I'm really excited to, to find out. What comes of that. Um, at the middle school, um, I'm really, I'm extremely proud of our counselors. They've been providing all of our students with an SEL lesson focusing on a new topic each month. Um, they named their lessons connections, um, because students are connecting with each other, um, so they've mixed. They do it by grade level on Wednesdays, so that it's mixed with students who are fully remote and students who are, are hybrid in person. So they can connect with their peers that they might not have been seeing this year. Um, and they have been surveying the students to find out um, what topics they should cover. So it's really tailored to what they're, what they need. So for example, some topics that they've covered have been adjusting to change, stress management. Self-care, organization, um, and uh, I know that um, Ms. LaZat is going to be doing, she's the eighth grade counselor. She's going to um, be doing um, that transition to high school and I think um, maybe bringing some high school students in to talk as well. So um, they've been doing a really great job with that, um, and they've also all created remote offices with self-care strategies. And they, they are reporting that the kids are using those a lot, um, so I think that's great. Um, Mr. DeGialamo and I are working on a virtual R and R. Um, typically that's an afternoon um, for students and um, staff and outside. Um, uh, people like the Y come in and run workshops for kids to give them some time to decompress in a stressful time. So this year, we're running it for staff and um, students, which I'm really excited about because I really think that our teachers, you know, as Jim said before. Um, this is affecting our teachers um, significantly, just as it is our students and all of us. And I think they really deserve to have um, some, some time for their own self-care. So just to give you um, a look at some of the things that we're going to be providing for staff. Um, we have Riverside Community Care, um, running some coping strategies groups um, specific to COVID. Um, we have yoga, I have crystal bowl meditation, um, and Zumba. Um, and I probably have some more things coming um, for students. Um, I reached out to um, Scott Smith. Our teacher at the high school and um, Dave Harrison, um, and they have sent some students my way. Who are really excited to run some drama theater workshops for kids and art class. And um, they're being really creative and they're super excited. One of the young ladies is, actually wants to be an art teacher. So um, she, so Scott said, I think this would be perfect for her and she's really excited, so I think she's running three different sessions, which is pretty cool. Um, so I think that'll be unique for the kids to see and then um, the Y um, is gonna come and do some as well virtually. And then Riverside Community Care is gonna offer um, uh, an interactive presentation for kids. On how the pandemic has affected them and coping strategies that they can use. Um, at the high school, um, so in addition to all the things that they've been providing, um, every year. We um, we, through our AFI grant, we brought in um, My Life for Schools, which is, I've talked about previously here. But um, basically it's a computer program, kids can go in and they can check in, this is how I'm feeling today. Then it suggests a mindfulness or meditation practice, guides the kid through it, and then they check out how am I feeling now? Um, so um, we began that second quarter, um, so I looked at the data today so far. There have been eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty-five completed check-ins. And three hundred and eighty students who have used the program for all those check-ins. So um, uh, Jen Shields and I are working through, uh, we want to get some more data on, you know, I know a lot of the teachers who are using it. Because they email me whenever our kids can't log in, so, but we, I really want to see who exactly is using it. Um, we've had some login issues, so I've tried, been trying to work with a company on that. Um, but I'd really like to see where, you know, we want to know if we want to continue to invest in this program in the future. Um, so I kind of want to continue to look at the data and, you know, again, maybe give a big push, push it out again um, for kids to use. Um, and then um, uh, decisions at every turn have brought in the Minding Your Mind students. Um, the Young Adult Speaker Program, um, and Jen Shields and Ally Bachelor, who's one of our wellness teachers at the high school. Has, we're bringing these programs to our students remotely, um, and I believe. I believe our tenth graders will probably be getting this later in the year, but our ninth, eleventh and twelfth graders all watch this. Um, and I was looking at the feedback survey and a hundred and thirty-four of the hundred and seventy-two students who completed it. Um, said that it should come back yearly, they really liked it. I was looking at their, their comments and um, they were asked. What was the most helpful part of the presentation? Um, and uh, the most common answers were um, learning about how others utilize. Healthy coping strategies to manage their mental health issues. One that came up a lot was that, you know, kids were writing, I'm not alone in how I'm feeling, other people's, people are feeling this way as well. So I think again, that tells us a lot about how our kids are feeling right now. Um, and uh, cause all of these kids who talked um, were experiencing, had experienced depression, anxiety. Um, you know, uh, suicidal ideation, um, and pretty significant mental health issues. Um, and they talked a lot about um, how, what they did to get through that. And how they were able to get through the other side and have now developed really healthy um, coping strategies. Um, and the kids were saying that they really liked how they learned positive coping strategies and how to get help for themselves and others. A lot of kids wrote about how, you know, the hotlines, like the um, suicide prevention hotline that they shared, some of the kids shared. Um, was really helpful for them to have, so um. I'm gonna stop there, cause I don't know if there's other specific information you would like me to try to give you. So, or any questions on what I have presented so far?
I will open it up for questions uh, for Ms. Cutler, comments, concerns?
And Jen, I guess um, you know, what I'm, I'm most interested in is sort of your overall sense of, of how kids are dealing with. With COVID, I'm sure it's the full range of emotions, you know, some, doesn't impact them at all, they're the, the way they were before and others are really struggling. But you know, one of the things that I think a lot of people have worried about is the mental health impact of the, the pandemic. On students for not being in schools much or what have you. And I'm just, you know, if you have, if you have a general instinct on sort of how kids are really doing at the different levels. I guess I'd be interested in hearing that.
So I can't really provide you with hard data on that. But what I want to mark is that after, you know, speaking with all the counselors and, you know, see, seeing kids myself, I, I think that when our, I think that overall, our kids do better when they're in school. I think they really look forward to those days. I think their mental health is improved when they know that they're going to be coming to school and be able to connect with their friends, connect with their teachers, see people in person. You can see it when you walk in the buildings and you, and you see how excited the kids are to be there. Even at lunchtime, when, when it looks extremely different, they're still happy to be there. When I'm working closely with the Remote Learning Academy at Mendez. And, you know, those kids are very happy, they have developed a wonderful community in their classrooms. But they're lonely, they're, you know, and I, and I'm talking, you know, to our school psychologists over there, like, who's also working with the RLA, they, they're missing that connection. They love their teachers, but they want to see their teachers in person, they want to see each other in person. And I think that's coming up again and again. So I think my feeling is that overall, they want to be back in school. And that, that is, you know, definitely affecting their mental health and mental, I would say maybe mental wellness. We haven't seen like a big difference in numbers of like, for example, like our hospitalization numbers are right in early December, they were lower than they'd ever been, right now they're about even. And really are, you know, those, what we've really seen more is that students who had significant, significant mental health issues before the pandemic, it's exacerbated in those students. So it's gotten worse, hospital stays are longer, they haven't necessarily go, not got up a number. But I really think that's because we're not the, you know, kids, when they come to school, a lot of times they're more likely to talk to their counselor, more likely to disclose things. If they're not in school, they're probably not doing that. And, you know, we also, I think Jen Shields was sharing with me that when kids are, when kids were in school, you know, full-time, friends were much more likely to come down to the counseling office and say, I'm really worried about my friend so-and-so. And a lot of times that's how, you know, we would find out about kids who are, you know, really struggling emotionally. And that's just not happening as much right now because kids are in two days a week for the most part. So that's kind of my thought and I hope I kind of answered that for you, Mark.
Yeah, you did. I mean, that was, that was a great summary.
So Jen, we talked a lot about connectedness, right? And how important that is. And when you talk to the teachers and we're in this hybrid model, they see the kids, you know, you know, in-person two days, remote the one day. And then, you know, for different, depending on which building we're talking about, like a Mendez, that then another teacher takes them for the two full remote days and things like that. How, how are they, you know, can you get a sense to the impact on that connection they can have with the kids? Are they still able to form substantive connections? Or is it, how impactful has that, you know, different models and, and durations been?
So I think that, you know, I can speculate and I haven't like directly asked that question of teachers. And certainly something that I can do. But I think that, I think that the teachers I have spoken to are certainly making the connection with the kids. Whether honestly, whether they're learning remotely with them or they're in person. But it is not as strong a connection as it typically is. Because you're not, you know, you're, you're just not having as much face time. And there's certain things like because of COVID and social distancing and, and things like that, you know, you may typically during the school day, have a conversation in the hall with a kid, make, make a personal connection. That is a lot more difficult to make on those two, two, you know, hybrid days now. So I guess that's probably the best answer I can give to that right now, Paul. I can certainly, if that's something you want me to ask.
Yeah, just, just if you had a sense of, you know, the, the, the impact to our connectedness. I mean, Jim focuses on it every start of the year and we, we talk about it a lot. And, and, you know, having those trusted adults, well, how trusted can the adult be in, in the scenarios we're put into today, right?
Right. So I'm really interested to see like the data from our Mendez survey on that. To see really are, do students feel like they're making that connection where they have someone? And we actually asked them to name who it was. So I think that will be interesting. And, you know, I think maybe that's something we can consider doing in other buildings as well. But I mean, my guess would be that it's less than in our typical years. And we're certainly still, I think everyone is, you know, recognizing the need to do. All our teachers I know are integrating SEL still in their, in their in-person classrooms and in their Zoom class or in their Google meets. And, you know, making sure they're checking in with kids. But it is, it's, it's a different, it's completely different and it's, it's definitely more difficult to do.
Yeah, I, I'd be curious to see that data because like for my kids, they so much look forward to the in-person days. I almost wonder whether that somehow compensates for it such that they are able to make connections. Because it's not taken for granted the way that every other day in a, in a normal year is. So I don't know, you know, if that, that's even quantifiable. But I, I know like at least one of my kids has made up more of a connection this year to his teacher than he has in the other ones. And I think he cheats a lot more so on those days.
Yeah, that's a really good point too. Yeah, that would be interesting. I can definitely try to get some data on that.
Other questions or comments?
I was just going to come back to one thing, Jen, I mean, something you said about comparison to the prior year. And I guess I'm looking forward, it's sort of like one of those things, what did we learn from COVID? And obviously we're not done with it yet. But obviously the, the concern about mental health, the, the impact on connections, as you've been talking about, is something that we all took for granted to some degree and are appreciating it in a different way. And its importance in a different way. And I'm be curious if, if you could give some thought to, you know, sort of as a going forward thing, is there a way to, to kind of evaluate how we're doing with, you know, qualitative connections with kids as a district? And how to maybe examine how to do that better, you know? Even if we're doing well, we can always do better with those things. I don't, I don't know what the literature is out there that provides it. But if there were, we love assessments in schools these days, right? To some degree, you know, if there's some sort of a connection assessment. You know, I mean, it's, it's great to hear that you might be able to by asking kids in a building, who are they most connected to? You know, that you can probably start to figure out why, what's a person doing that makes them connect better with kids? And how do we share that with other people so we can improve it throughout the system? So it's, it's obviously a long-term thought, but I don't want to lose sight of that or having the conversation.
Yeah, actually, Mark, that's exactly where I'm headed in terms of our counseling and SEL initiatives. So last year I piloted a developmental relationship survey from Search Institute. And what Search Institute with their developmental relationships does is exactly what you just said, Mark. So it basically has evidence-based ways that you can make connections with students. So I had talked to Jim and Mike about doing, actually developmental relationships trainings with our middle school and high school staff in the future. And part of what I wanted to do was have the developmental relationship survey so that we could then show the data to the staff saying, wow, you know, our kids are saying that they really feel connected to, you know, this type of teacher when they do this. And so that we could then say, you know, we're providing you with this training so that you can learn, you know, these things. You're doing a really great job in this area, how can we strengthen this area? This survey also has a diversity equity and big diversity equity inclusion section that Mike and I have looked at. And I think that would really help us, you know, the high school has done an amazing job on start, really starting that work. But then hearing from our students, what is their perspective? And then how can, you know, we take action on that? So that is absolutely the direction that I, I want to go in. And so I, I, you know, I, we're actually, I haven't talked to Kelly and Dave about this, but I am planning in the next month to present the, the result of our pilot survey. And then talk about if there's a good time that we can have that survey now that it's fully out to our middle and high school students to really give us that, that data.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you for all the work you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
And Jen just some feedback, I know Michael, Mike will also smile at this. But as it relates to our implementation of like responsive classroom in the morning meeting and things like that, I can tell you that I have a child who could have cared less before. And, you know, he, he actually came to me and said, hey, you know, I, I, he, he also does bands. So he misses one of his in-person morning meetings. And he, he said to me, he's, he's like, I can't wait for, I think it was Tuesday, because that's the only in-person morning meeting I have all week. So that, that, that has really made a difference, I think, and at least in my kid. And that I wouldn't have expected it, so.
That's fantastic to hear. And I can see Mike's smile. So, yeah, that's, that's awesome.
Thank you for you and your entire team, Jen, on this school counselors week. We appreciate you so much and, and the position that you're in. And if you don't have one of the most important roles in the district right now, you might have the most important role in the district right now. I mean, you didn't ask for, you know, thousands of people in trauma all at the same time, which is kind of what it is at, at different levels, even if people don't know, know they are. But you know, and you're addressing it. And it's really reassuring too to, and that's why we brought you on initially. But in this moment in time, more than ever, the fact that we're more about, we're not just about, you know, responding to a mental health crisis, but about, you know, giving people the tools and the confidence and the understanding of, of when they need help and the importance of reaching out. And the importance of sharing with everybody else when you're lonely, et cetera. And then finding out that everybody else is too. And those kinds of conversations that, you know, might, you might not have thought would happen in a math class. But, but, but we understand that, you know, you can't do any of those things if we're not addressing, you know, who we are and what's going on at our core. So anyhow, thank you so much for, for doing that here in Ashland and for doing it so well. And to Jen Shields and everybody else on your team. I mean, I'm one of the people that I've talked to Jim about my, my concern about the kids. And I know that that is probably the case for every single person on this meeting. And, you know, we, we really appreciate that the burden that's on all of you right now. But even especially you, since that's your line of work. And, you know, just really thank you for everything that you're doing. And it sounds from hearing some of my colleagues and what's going on for their kids that the students are responding. So keep up the effort.
I really appreciate that. I, you know, I feel very thankful for the opportunity to do this here in Ashland. I love it and, you know, have even grown to even more love it during this time. Because I feel like we are really, you know, working really hard to, to meet the needs. And, and, you know, really prioritize this and make, you know, and really help our students and their families. So I, you know, I really appreciate all of your kind words. I'll keep working hard.
Yeah, thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Okay. Next up. So we did the athletic discussion. Now we're back to you, Jim, with the MOA.
Yeah, so just an update, we, we do have an approval from the, the AEA. They ratified the MOA, a lot of, a lot of acronyms there for people who aren't used to it. But adjustments to our, our schedule moving forward to meet student learning time as required by the Department of Education, which includes middle and high school streaming classes. And, you know, so, so they did ratify it. We've talked about this in the past. I'm just looking for the board to, to also approve the MOA.
Who's got the motion? Oh, unless anybody has any comments or, or questions about it?
Move to approve the MOA between the school committee and the APA. As presented.
I'll, I'll second it.
Thanks, Kathy. And all in favor, Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Aaron? An aye for me as well, that passes. Thank you.
I'm done with my motions for tonight, by the way.
One more.
Do them so well, Mark. Thank you.
Approval of proposal for district communication review.
Yeah, so it's, as you know, part of, we've had this discussion for years. And part of the goal this year was that, one of my goals in the district goal is to, to really review our communication strategy, our social media presence, all those types of things as we move forward. It's been a challenge for sure. There are a number of firms that have, that do this work. So Chris and I, we put out a request for proposal and we received two back. The Donovan Group and Sesso. And what, what I was trying to get at is having a group come in, review the things we're doing well, things we need to improve upon. I talked to the Dedham Superintendent, Mike Welch, and he had this done as well. And it, and what it did was it, it led them down the path of, of looking at a hiring communications director for their, their organization and working with each school building and principals and teachers and telling the story continuously of, of what's happening in the schools. But also being, being a individual who can, you know, I, I spent a lot of my time writing press releases and, and writing things to the, to the community with regard to COVID, et cetera. But there are times where it, it's, you know, certainly we could have someone who's a professional do this and help with it. So what this will do is help identify our areas, our strengths, our weaknesses and, and an avenue that we may potentially go down. So the, the lowest quote that came in was $10,000, Chris, was that correct? So I'm just asking the board for approval to, to move forward. We have the funding to move forward with hiring this consulting firm to come in and do the communication survey slash audit. It, it will include having conversations with the number of you on the board, but also town management, the community members, et cetera. Analyzing, you know, our website, we have a new website that will be opening up. And hopefully soon, I talked to Ann Canton tonight about it. And it's, it's almost ready to, to go live.
Questions?
And it'll be two community forums too, that's what the.
Yeah, yeah, at minimum, Kathy, that's what we put in the RFP. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'll just voice my extraordinaries for this. And this, I feel like as long as I've been on the committee, we've, we've been talking about communication, communication strategies, how to, how to improve it sort of throughout the organization. You know, I think, you know, we talk about it often, we're talking about school committee or Jim, what you're doing. But I think there are, you know, places for improvement throughout. And I'm really excited we're taking this step and, and hope it leads this kind of path of, you know, quite frankly, you know, I've been used to this, the consumer mentality. It's like our students and our families are, are consumers. And this leads us to a better communication with them. I think that would be a real step forward for us, even though I think communication is something that we do pretty well right now. So I'm, I'm really excited about taking this step forward.
Jim, I, I just have questions, like how did, did you talk to the people at Donovan, like you kind of interviewed them?
No, we did not. So.
Oh, you didn't? Okay.
No, no, it was just a request for a proposal that came in. Then we looked at the two, or I looked at the two proposals. This is one that I had had other school districts in Massachusetts used. I reached out to them and they were happy with their, with their work. So, yeah, again, it's, I thought we might get more proposals, but we only got two. It's sort of like transportation, you know, a lot of people ask, but you only get one back.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, no, I'm with, I'm with Mark. We have talked. Yeah, no, I'm with, I'm with Mark. We have talked about this a lot, like how can we communicate better? And there's so many platforms. You know, the, the Facebook, the Twitter, um, your, uh, the letters that you write, you know, that go out to the parents and yeah, I, I agree. This would, seems like a gr- a good step to be taking. Get some professional consults in here.
Anybody else? Comments? No, thank you for taking action on that. I think that was, you know, the right next step after our, our last uh, long communication discussion. Um, and looking forward to that feedback.
Jim, did you need a motion on that?
Well, I, I mean, you, you, we typically vote on the overall budget. So um, so this is outside, meaning we, it wasn't something that we had necessarily budgeted for. Um, and I, you know, I felt like I should come to the board because it is $10,000. It's significant um, to ask for your approval, consensus at least to, to use the funds that we have.
So if we didn't specifically budget for where, what funds is it coming from?
Uh, we've had some savings through um, probably, it probably come out of some salary accounts um that we've had some savings on with, with folks who left um, either partway through the year or been out because of
Yeah.
variety of reasons, so.
Within our budget, like we have like contracted services and different things. Usually it seems like we would have to appropriate money from some account.
We would move it over, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, typically our contracted services relate directly to uh, out of district costs.
Right. So I, I guess it's um, mainly
Yeah.
from a budgetary perspective, the form of the motion is do we need to move to transfer money from the particular line to um to the line for this purpose?
Um, I could bring that back at the next meeting if, I mean, if there's this consensus that I can move forward with having the conversation with the Donovan Group and uh, to get that process started anyway.
Yeah, I mean, you, you don't need that, you don't need that until you, until you need the, need the money.
We actually have to pay.
Right.
Yep. And, and there, if you go, their uh, proposal is at the end of the work is when they get paid, so.
You know how I feel.
Yeah, I do. Yeah. I do.
So we'll make the motion uh, when there's uh, more information about uh,
Yeah, fine. Yeah, I just want to be able to engage in conversation.
No, I'm glad that you did. I mean, we talked about this and I think this is the continuance of, of that conversation. You know, I, I want to, the things just to remind anybody who might be watching is uh, it always, communication is always uh, super important to us and on our list. Um, and we talk about it every year as something that we want to improve upon. Um, but if we're still feeling that way after we're utilizing all of our tools and so forth, then um outside consult just to, to let us know um, where we're doing well, where we can improve, something we may not have thought about. I think that's a, that's, that's a great next step in, in line, what I think we've asked you to do. So come back when you have uh, the financial details for us to move on.
Will do. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, Kathy, I think you might be, oh, nope.
Nope, Mike.
Assistant Superintendent update. Sorry, Mike. I didn't mean to hop right over you.
Just very quickly, I, I just wanted to publicly, you know, acknowledge the fact that our, our middle school teachers and our high school teachers have taken on the really important task of uh, live streaming. Uh, this past week we started and um, they're working obviously through some changes and, and working hard to make sure that they're getting all of the different uh, challenges out, but really proud of the efforts that they're making and we think this is going to be a a, a great, a great road ahead for our, our students and for our staff. So just wanted to acknowledge the work that they're doing and, and say how happy we are with what they've done so far this week.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions about that or comments? Okay, so now Kathy Bates.
Well, I, I don't have anything to read, so I, I don't have any um,
Great.
I don't have any warrants to report.
All right, we're good this week then.
Yeah.
And do we have um, anybody have anything on the minutes of December 28th?
I did not.
Anybody else? I did not, so I will take a motion to approve the minutes of December 28th, 2020.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
An aye for me as well. And then did anybody have anything on the January 8th, 2021 minutes?
Did not.
Anybody? Uh, let's move to uh, accept the minutes of January 8th, 2021. Who's got that?
So moved. Second.
And all in favor, Paul?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Sorry, Kathy?
Oh, aye.
Yeah, Mark?
Aye.
An aye for me. Uh, next up, uh, Jim, do we have any gifts and donations?
We do. We have won uh, $500 to the Henry Warren School from the ExxonMobil of Pond Street. Uh, so again, thank you. Second year in a row, Pete. Is that correct? Yeah, so thank you.
Is, is that for anything in particular or just uh?
How you, how are you using it?
Yes, it's uh, it's delineated that we need to use it to enhance science and mathematics. Um, so we've been using it to enhance the mystery science units, so the kids are actually doing hands-on science experiments with their teachers and their peers. Uh, it's a great way that our children are learning through actively being involved. Um, and our local mobile station uh, was excited when I shared this project with them last year that they funded it. Uh, so much so that this year it was a surprise to me. We had zero communication with each other and they sent us uh, some information saying that we can expect a check because we received the grant again this year.
Awesome. Great. Thank you to ExxonMobil.
Yeah, that's great.
Very much. We'll take a motion to accept that gift.
So moved.
In a second.
Aye.
Aye.
Kathy? Aaron?
Aye.
Paul? For me. And next up, uh, do we have any member updates?
So I'll just give an update. Everybody knows uh, the, the votes and, and the passage of the um both the Warren article at town meeting and the ballot. Uh, we have a subcommittee, so we didn't, it didn't mean we stopped doing anything. It's actually, we've, we've actually sped up in, in some other things. So we uh, we have a subcommittee for doing our construction manager selection process. Uh, the statements of qualifications for interested uh, construction managers was due yesterday. We received 11 submissions. So there's lots of interest in the project, which is great. Uh, just means we have a a, a lot of
A lot of things to go through.
A lot of things to review. Uh, so uh, the, the goal is to have that a shortlist uh, done uh, this month so we can uh put those out for uh, full proposals by the shortlisted uh, companies. So uh, I think that's, I think that's about it uh, from, from that perspective. And you know, everything else is still on track as we've talked about uh, going through design development this uh, this summer, going for permitting in the fall and then breaking ground hopefully uh, in the October, November timeframe.
Yeah, Paul's, the, these are 11 proposals, about 250 pages each, so.
Yeah, who's on that?
They're little books, Paul, right?
I, I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Perfect call bedtime reading.
Yeah, no.
Paul, thank, thank you for your continued leadership and chairing that committee, like huge amounts of work. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing.
Amazing.
We've all privately thanked you um, in different ways by you text or email or phone, but you know, this is I think our first meeting since then and I certainly wanted to publicly acknowledge your leadership in that role in particular. I know that the committee includes any others on this call, uh, Jim, Mike, Chris, Claudia. Um, and, and others who are not on this call, but um, if people really understood how much time you're putting into this. Um, they would question, you know, why Trish is still married to you, but um, she's been more married to this project.
Or why Stave Street still hires him.
Well, that's another question. Maybe we didn't want to put that on camera, but
Oh, that, that's all, you know, that's all the, the, the donations that he always makes. It's great.
All kidding aside, I think the manner in which you and the committee handled this project, the, the transparency with which you approached it. Um, you know, is, is reflected in the level of confidence the community reflected with their vote. We haven't had anything passed in this community by 1500 to 100 um, ever. Probably ever, it's early, you know, I only can speak to the 15, 16 years I've been here, but um, you know, I think that, that really speaks volumes. And I just wanted to take a moment to, to thank you again for all your efforts and on the rest of the committee as well.
I concur. Very well said, Mark.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. And how, how about, I, I concur too. In addition to that, you know, thank you to the community for all the Ashland residents that came out. Um, that, yeah, Mark, I agree, the support. I've, I've never seen this support for a project like that. Two huge projects too. So thank you, community. Thank you, Ashland residents for coming out and voting.
Very exciting for Ashland and very nice to have uh, the feeling of uh, you know, the collective excitement for these projects.
Yeah, no, I, I, I do thank everybody for coming out because we wanted that, we know we were doing this at a time where it was difficult to do these kind of things, right? Um, and it's got to be done, it's got to have some integrity. And if this was 500 people coming out and it was uh, 350, 150, that, that's not reflective of, of something that has integrity. But when you have 1700, over 1700 people come out and it's 87 and a half percent uh, approval, uh, I, I think that, that, that just speaks that it did have integrity and enough people cared about it. So uh, I echo what you said, Kathy. Definitely appreciate the support from the community, so.
Yeah.
Your work's not done yet.
Great buildings.
Not even both of them.
And, and, and just, you know, uh, you know, I, I know a lot of the, the people that have the FaceTime get the credit for town meeting and, 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 and the ballot and everything like that running so smooth, but uh, the amount of work that went behind the scenes of that uh, from a facilities guys to the IT guys, WACA, uh, town clerk's office and all the staff that, you know, it's primarily staff that did all the ballot uh, work on the election day and stuff like that. So it was definitely a lot of work by a lot of people that are uh, aren't in front of cameras and things like that. So definitely appreciate the effort there.
Thank you. Any, any other members have any updates they want to share?
I'll just share that um, I had the, my first um, MASC board meeting, um, which is really kind of a, a leadership orientation day meeting two or two weeks ago, I think. Um, and it was an interesting opportunity to sort of talk about what, well, it's coming ahead, but I think there's a lot of energy in that board to try to provide some programming throughout the year that will be of interest and use to school members, school members around the state. Um, in addition to the program that you had in the past November, or did happen this year. Um, just things that are ongoing. So I will certainly, the, the committee impressed the, of the things that we're planning in particular. Want to share that, that little
Mark, are they, do they have a sense of whether next November will happen or not?
Actually, there was a survey that went out, um, I think on the list serve
Yeah.
week or so ago and actually just given the results of it today. Um, at least the preliminary results and it seems like um, there are a lot of people who, you know, kind of want to see where things are. Um, a lot of people are contingent on the vaccine, but I would say that my overall read of the data real quickly is people want to get back if, if they feel safe doing it. Um, so there's, there are models that are being explored, whether it's going to be in-person, whether it's going to be hybrid um, or virtual. Um, I'm not sure what the time frame is going to be when they make that final decision. I think a lot of places um, right now aren't even taking reservations for major conferences because they're not sure what their operations are going to look like either. So I, I think a lot of balls in the air, but um, you know, it, it's something that should be some decision making on everything in the next couple of months.
Thanks. You, anybody else? I mean, I'll share real quick. It hasn't happened yet, but I was contacted by um, I think it was the Chair of Hopkinton School Committee, looking to see if there was any interest in, you know, getting the local chairs together from the different school committees around here just to share ideas and, and talk. And I, I think the idea is there hasn't been an initial meeting yet, but I think if that goes well and runs smoothly, then that might be an ongoing thing that happens maybe once or twice a month. So I will let you know how it goes, but I have um, accepted an invitation to go to that. It looks like there may be 10 or 12 people on the call. So looking forward to hearing uh, you know, the, the challenges and victories that our colleagues are having.
Yeah, that sounds good, Lori.
Yeah, it's a really great idea.
So that's all I've got. So anything else before I take a motion to adjourn?
We'll, we'll all see each other on Monday, right?
Monday night, we have our budget meeting. So we'll see you there. And then um Friday of next week, we will have our COVID check-in.
Yeah.
But not tomorrow, because we're all set for that this week.
Jim's already sent out his communication.
That was bad.
Yeah.
A motion that we adjourn.
All in favor, Aaron?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Thank you. I as well. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Good night. Thanks. Thanks for being here.